And with that said, it comes for us to adopt our agenda. And for information, we've had two updated added items on the 4.01. Now we have number two. This is for Mr. Anderson, maintenance and facilities. Your coordinator is requesting the approval of the pre-construction fee proposal for construction management services for the manufacturing building at BBTC, $26,324. This is from Allstate Construction Incorporated. Also, we have another added item, 8.01, number two. From, it is from Eagle Tree Technologies Information Technology Maintenance slash or Service Contract for IT Director Position. Those two have been added to the agenda this evening. So we're now, do I have a motion that we adopted?
Motion, I need to pull.
Okay, what you need to pull?
Um, the, I need to pull. It's on the personnel recommendation.
I'm sorry?
On personnel recommendations.
Okay.
Mr. Lundie, that construction 4.01 is the one I mentioned to you that we needed to have action on so I could make a statement regarding the contract.
Okay.
Earlier, so if we could take that off the consent and just put it on the action. I just need to make a brief comment.
Okay, so we've got a request to pull it for action then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So the 8.01, number two, the, or I'm sorry, 4.01, number two, we will, it will fall underneath action item this evening instead of the consent. Right?
4.01?
Yes.
Okay, correct.
Yeah, that will be an action item.
It's already on the agenda.
It's good to see it.
Well, but this, it was added from the previous.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. O'Neal, what you have?
It's on personnel recommendations.
What number is that that you?
Number 29, number 32.
Okay, for number 29, now is that for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is that the only one?
32 and 36.
32 and 38.
36.
Oh, 36, okay. All right. Okay.
I don't, I don't know if I need to pull this or just ask the question on it. I need to pull it for discussion, 8.01.
Additional. I got a question on 8.01 too.
So we need to pull 8.01 too for discussion?
Okay.
Making an action item instead of the consent item.
Yes.
And that way you can discuss.
It'll be, it'll be action. So 8.01, number two, is for action also, okay? And since we're doing all that on rec, personnel, personnel recommendations, items 29, 32, and 36.
Yeah.
We will pull for discussion and action, make it all.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. Anything else? I, do we have a motion and second?
I made a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. A motion's been made by Ms. Agner. Do we have a second? Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. All righty. Approval of our minutes, December the 10th, 2024, regular school board meeting.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes a motion, seconded by Ms. Agner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. And now we have a workshop, the financial update this evening. And so, Mr. Superintendent, do you want to head this up or what?
I can. Ms. Monahan, you want to give us a report?
All right, thank y'all for allowing me to do this tonight. So a couple of things we do want to cover. You can see we're going to talk about FTE, current state of the budget, staffing, per pupil ratio, and a hurricane update. So we'll start off with FTE. Our projected FTE from Department of Education that we started off the year with, it's 2521, 2,521 students. We are down from that projection. We're only sitting at 2,339 students. So we're down 100, or excuse me, not students FTE, I apologize, 182 FTE, which is approximately a $1.5 million revenue loss that we will see hit us this year. So if you'll look, I have it broken out by school. The high schools had the biggest drop, followed by elementary, primary school, and then middle. So pretty much every school has had a drop in FTE. Then for the budget update, we were projected this year, at the beginning of the year, to have about a 9.09% fund balance. We're carrying, we carried a good fund balance over to start the year, 7.675 million. We were expecting to receive 29 million in revenues. Our expenditures, I did, you know, mention back in July that we are deficit spending this year. So our expenditures were projected at 33,869,000, which would have left us with the ending fund balance of 3.784 million, which is little over 9%. However, due to the loss in FTE, our current budget as of today, we still have that, that good beginning fund balance, which we're thankful for this year. Our revenues dropped from 29 million down to 27 million. That's that one and a half million dollar loss from FTE. Our expenditures, we are able to adjust those down a little bit because we have so many open positions that have not been filled, that were built into the budget to begin with. So that's why you see that decrease in expenditures. So that's kind of helping us out this year. We're still overstaffed, which I'll get to next. So our ending fund balance is going to be $3.5 million, which is 8.69%. So it's going to be a little bit less than the 9% due to the loss in FTE. And then Ms. Bonnie Sue, I know you asked about next year's predictions. So we don't have any final numbers from the property appraiser as far as property tax values and millage rates from the state and all that. But I can tell you this, we have drastically have, we drastically have to cut expenditures next year, or we will have a negative fund balance.
Can't have a negative fund balance.
Not have a negative fund balance. We're deficit spending a little over 4.1 million this year. And as you can see, we only have a 3.5 million dollar fund balance. So we can't, like, we, we have to stop deficit spending.
Have you been given any, I mean, have they updated anything on property values or anything at all?
We have the projections that they gave us a few months back, but that's it. Nothing written in stone. Okay, and then the next page is going to be instructional staffing. So for each school, we have FTE, the number of FTE-generated positions. And then we have add-on positions, which are extra positions we provide out of the general fund as a bonus to these schools to provide more student services. So for each school, I've got it listed. Primary school is overstaffed by two. One of those positions is vacant, so technically on the books, we're only overstaffed by one. However, by what was budgeted, we are two overstaffed, if that makes sense.
Do we plan to fill that one?
No, ma'am. And then elementary school is actually understaffed by two. They're the only school that's understaffed. Middle school is overstaffed by four. Three of those four are vacant, so that is helping the budget. But they still are overstaffed. High school's overstaffed by two. They have three vacant positions, so that's helping a lot. And then Steen Hatch is overstaffed by four with zero vacant positions. So to kind of explain those associated costs, the 12 total positions that were overstaffed across the whole board, the whole district, that's around $716,000 of the budget that we would be spending on positions that are, we don't have students to fill, basically. But because we have the vacancies, we have seven vacancies. So that's 418,000 that we actually have not spent because they're vacant. So it's still in the budget, the full 716,000 that was budgeted for the positions that no longer needs to be in the budget.
So if we bring back over here?
That's part of the reason why those expenditures reduced on that first page.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So a quick question.
Okay.
You've got, you got this noted on the instructional staff.
Yes, ma'am.
So these vacancies and where there's overstaff, is that due to only instructional positions? So these are like classroom positions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so for the ones that are overstaffed, like you got noted at the middle school, peer primary, and the high school, and Steen Hatchy.
Yes, ma'am.
Are these all like classroom positions? Or are these like those ones that's follow-up on the instructional, like library dean or whatever?
Those as well, yes, ma'am. The add-ons plus the FTE-generated core positions. So the add-on positions would be literacy coaches, deans, and all your well teachers.
Okay, all right.
Including all of them.
Okay.
So Lacey, let me ask you a question. When you figure the FTE in, for Steen Hatchy, the generated positions of five, is that at the same FTE rate as the other schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Or did you factor in the 2.75 isolated school funds?
So that is what I was going to mention about Steen Hatchy. Even though they are overstaffed, they sustain, sustain themselves because of the small isolated funding.
That's my question, thank you.
But that's just Steen Hatchy, right?
Right.
So that kind of take care of the four positions that you got highlighted for Steen Hatchy?
Right.
Okay.
You could basically put an X on Steen Hatchy. Because they're, and they really are, are you adding in the money to our budget that they get?
Yes, ma'am. And now something to think about too, though, is they are down. Like, their current count was 91, they were 94. The count I got from Pam this week, they're down into the 80s now. So, I mean, if they're still losing kids.
That doesn't matter. We got to stay under.
We got to stay above 25. But there'll be, there might be classrooms with, you know, with a teacher and no kids if we keep it overstaffed. Even though they do make their own money from the small isolated funding.
Let me ask this question, Jenny, you might be able to answer it. If, if those four in Steen Hatchy, could they technically be employed in that school but come help at another school?
Would it still cost the same?
Well, that, their, their money would stay in Steen Hatchy. And Steen Hatchy will be paying them. But they're just going to be loaned or, or come help somewhere else. Is that possible?
Well, I mean, we're overstaffed at all the other schools except for elementary. So we wouldn't have anywhere to put them, but like, that's a sub, you mean? Like if someone's out?
Well.
There might be.
I'm just thinking, if that money's there to support that, and they're there, and they can take the place of somebody else that's not qualified? Well, or doesn't have?
I think it would cause further decline in enrollment because parents don't want their kids in there. So we would lose that FTE, any FTE we gained, we would lose.
We're not going to lose FTE. We're going to keep that because we're under.
You're losing FTE now.
She was saying if we combined classes.
Oh. You're talking, you're talking about everywhere but Steen Hatchy.
We've done that in the past, and Steen Hatchy in our enrollment was. Right, it was.
She was talking about Steen Hatchy, combining them there.
There's no. There's no need there to do that. So I wouldn't see a reason to do that. But I'm just saying, if they have some people that are qualified, or whatever, in their field, can they be loaned? Well, Steen Hatchy would keep them enrolled there, keep the payroll there. And they would just come as a sub or come as a whatever to the other schools.
Look at that sparsity funding.
In other words, we'd pay them through Steen Hatchy's school. I don't know if that's legal, but I'll see why not. They're in the district, they're being paid by the district.
I don't know where that number for Steen Hatchy is going to end at. I mean, we've lost so many businesses that families don't have jobs there anymore. And, I mean, and it is the young families that keep our businesses running way more than the retired people who don't have children in the school. So I don't know where that number is going to end up at. But, I mean, every day, you know.
Okay, all right.
And then the next page is the per pupil ratios. So I did it for the total per pupil ratio and then also the instructional per pupil ratio. So we are, that shows too, our average over here in other district comparison. We're sitting at 13.41. So that shows we're a little bit overstaffed. We should be more around that Gilchrist number, you know, around the 15 range.
We've always been neck and neck with Madison, so you can tell that we're down compared to them.
Right, yes, ma'am. And then last but not least, Hurricane Adelia update. Which is crazy because we've sent out two more hurricanes, haven't even started those yet. So we're still just talking Adelia here. But so far, the amount of deductible paid is 4.498 million dollars. And that all came from that FM loan that we received. We still have 1.6 left to pay from that loan. We have received our first set of funds from FEMA. They didn't come straight to the school board because obviously they go straight to pay back that loan. But they did release 715,916 dollars back towards that loan to pay it down.
The 1, 1.6?
6.1, yes, ma'am. The total loan, the 6.1 million dollar loan. So FEMA
Okay, I see.
Pays that straight back until that loan is paid off. And then we receive our payments after that point. So so far, the total number of projects we have in the FEMA portal right now is 15. Six have been obligated, nine are still pending. Five of those nine, they have not even assigned any cost to yet to tell us what kind of reimbursement that we could get because they're still under cost review and all that. So, but for the six projects that are obligated, that total is 3.8 million dollars. So that pretty much is the state saying, we've approved you for these projects. This is the amount of money we're going to reimburse for those. But like I said, it don't come to us until that loan's paid off first.
And that 3.8 will come off of the six? Is it, in that 3.8, have you got this that we've already received in that?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah, it's right there at the top, you don't see that?
See the total received, but the total amount obligated, is it that received taken away from there?
That's what's left to be received, is the obligated amount, yes, ma'am.
So if we, when we started, we were at six. Now we're down to 3.8?
No, ma'am, the loan started at six. Now it's down to the six minus the 715,000. But that 3.8, when that gets paid by the state, that'll get paid back to that loan as well.
Okay.
They haven't paid it.
I would like to see the beginning and all the payments and then the end. Not, not this piece smeared like this, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Just email me.
Yeah, I sure can.
Because I'm, this isn't clear of what is actually come off the top.
Gotcha. And the two-day district expenditures, this is what we have spent out of our pocket so far this year. So Adelia repairs, we spent 68,000. Adelia management fees, that's what we pay synergy to manage all of the FEMA projects, 225,000. So we've totally spent 294,000 this year.
Out of the general fund. And we don't have any idea what else we have, we're obligated for between now and the end of the year.
Right. And that management cost, the PO to them's 300,000. So we know there's going to be more expenses to general fund for Adelia. And we haven't even gotten into Helene yet.
Okay, that 300,000, is that part of that top six?
No, just.
No, ma'am, this is our district cost.
Yeah, I want to see the top, every.
The loan and what's going towards the loan.
I want to see the whole gamut of what, you know, we started here and this is where we are.
Okay.
In regard, you know, I know, and you can break it out as far as what we've paid out of general fund, but I want it in there because we've paid it. So it needs to come off the top, correct?
Well, we haven't, so we haven't paid the loan. So we're kind of keeping the loan separate.
This is just fees.
That we've paid, yes, ma'am, out of our pocket.
Out of our pocket.
Has nothing to do with the 6.1 at all.
So these expenditures are what we're paying out of general fund. It has nothing to do with the money we've seen from Department of Management and nothing to do with the deductible that we have to pay. Okay. So my question is, if we are just dealing with Adelia and the board has not received any information as to where we at with Helene or Debbie, then how we know our fund balance is really sitting at 8.69?
So FEMA has not opened up the portal yet for Helene until we, we have a.
I know they haven't opened up the portal, but what have we assessed as our damage? So we'll know what we're looking at, just like we was able to determine we had this $6 million deductible. How do we know what expense we're at with the other two hurricanes?
With Debbie, we have, we're not claiming anything for that.
Okay.
Helene, we are working on like the DI, the.
Property damage inventory.
Like that first assessment is due this week. So we're in progress with the whole list of all of that and how much, if those meet deductible with insurance, if we'll get anything for insurance or if we'll be required to pay any of that. So we're kind of in progress.
So we won't be able to know what an expense is until FEMA tells us that we could calculate an expense? Like, what are you saying?
It's not just FEMA, it's our insurance also, because it all has to be adjusted and.
So we got a busted window, we can't say what it's going to cost to take care of that window until the adjuster comes out?
Now, didn't I hear you say earlier that the Helene, some of that, since it's not as big as Adelia, but some of it is affected the work of Adelia that was going on? They're going to try to marry those together in some cases? Don't say that.
We don't want to make them upset. But no, like, like there's some, like with Debbie, like even like when Debbie came through, there was still leaks and things, but those leaks were from Adelia issues, you know what I mean?
So Adelia is taking care of those.
Right.
Right.
And then Helene.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not as, it's not as crazy as Adelia, but like some of our roots still weren't fixed. So that's still Adelia, you know what I mean? That's still Adelia.
Right.
So it's not like a new.
It's just an added.
But when will we be able to tell if we're going to have any expense from Helene?
I mean, we're in progress with it, I promise you. Like, I'm sending like everything with, to the insurance and the deductible and we have to see what meets the deductible. If it meets the deductible, then, like, if that insurance covers it, then we don't pay anything. You know? Or we only pay what the, what insurance doesn't cover. But that's still, there's still, that's due this week, like.
Do we have any avenues, the, the roughly $300,000 we've paid out of general fund dollars? Do we have any avenue to recuperate any of that?
Some of that, like that Adelia management, some of that we can get back. But it's based on like a percentage, there's like a formula to that on what FEMA will give you. So it's kind of a percentage of what the total amount that they give you that can go towards that. So we will get, like, that is out of pocket right now, but it should, some of that should get reimbursed. Now, all of it won't.
And you don't know when, though, either.
All of it won't. But, but we are submitting reimbursement also. Because we wouldn't have gotten them to come do that if we were paying that out of, you know what I mean? We wouldn't have done that.
Right.
Thank you, Shen.
Okay, so to wrap up, some recommendations. So the schools that are overstaffed that also have vacancies, we're going to take the vacancies down, make those not available, not fill those. We really need to put a halt on extra hours and overtime. They're starting to get a lot of that for odds and ends things, and we just don't have it in the budget to, to afford that. And then another thing, like Kiki mentioned, we might have to look at combining some classes, changing some schedules, stuff like that, if we continue to lose FTE.
Are you, are these recommendations, I understand we're not going to look at refilling these, I meant filling these vacancies. Now, you mentioned earlier about these classrooms with non-certified staff. So we're, I mean, I'm hopeful, but I'm not sure. But far as these vacancies that are for classrooms, well, we do need certified staff. What are we going to do if we get an opportunity of a certified employee? Are we not going to fill these classrooms or what?
So we're interested in talking to Robert last week. But when we look at those master schedules and talking about, is there a possibility of a teacher taking on more students or a teacher taking on another period? So what I said, that when you sit down and you try to put the puzzle together, it's not true, or that's not the question.
That is my question. My question is, if you're saying you're not going to fill the vacancies and you're telling me that the classrooms that are overstaffed are instructional classrooms?
Three vacancies, like one on advertising, but two that have just come up right at Christmas, like 12:12, 12:40. Looking at the master schedule, we have to advertise those two. So some of those classes are still going on. But just like she and I were looking at the master schedule and seeing, is there a way to even change some of these kids' schedules and get them to a different teacher? Might have a teacher that's here, you know what I mean?
I'm not for that, especially if they ain't certified. I'm not for that.
So I know, but what I'm saying is I would give them a certified teacher.
Okay.
But, well, as we were looking at that master schedule, there's no way. Because you may have 18 in this class and 15 in this class. And if you lose seven over, you still got these other.
11.
11 times to find a place. It's just, it's, so we talked about it for a good hour or so, and there's just no way. So we were advertising two of her vacancies that had, that had certified teachers all year up until December 20th, when they resigned. So that's probably on this agenda. But, but one of her vacancies that just came up, that was probably an add-on.
Mm-hmm. Now.
But I understand what you're saying. If I can get a certified person to make it, because she was going to be there this year. I had three or four positions. As the year has gone on.
Mm-hmm.
And depression and still things, so we're, we're, a lot of vacancies. And those vacancies may come in there, but they're not.
Right. That's what I'm asking, you know, where the vacancies are and, you know, where you already may have a long-term sub, but if someone comes along. I mean, those positions will be filled, because I mean, we're right here in testing season. I know, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, like, as we're going to, if any of these, if a person will have a position that is filled with a sub and not any person with a certificate, we re-advertise it. But yes, to your, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, you're saying the, the overstaffing is coming from instructional positions. So that's what I'm saying. If one minute we're saying we're freezing positions, but at the same time, if we're having to advertise for certified teachers, we are going to fill those, right? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
And the next, we will start saying, these are how many positions we're getting. And so those four will not be included, you know, so that's two.
Do we, do we have any numbers on non-instructional staffing formulas?
We do, and we started working on that and got formulas from other districts. And we're definitely overstaffed and non-instructional. And so one of the things we mentioned and we talked about between Lacey and I and several of us is that as a position becomes. is that as a position becomes, um, vacant, like if someone does resign, we will not advertise it.
What was bothering me about the whole thing is that, like, our first choice in this, it seems like, has been directly, and in the classroom, and the people that are hands-on with our kids every day. Like, to me, that's the last place we want to look.
I know, but our staffing is based on FTE. So if the students are not there, then the teacher is not needed.
Right.
But then your non-instructional is based on district, and some is based on FTE. Cafeteria, lunchroom, um, we have found that we're overstaffed in cafeteria.
So really, though, that first bullet point is, is, is for instructional and non-instructional. You're not going to, so that would take care of both of things.
Um, can I ask another question? Based off the information that you gave us, Lacey, far as the FTE, um, and then I requested, you know, the FT analysis, and I don't know if the, um, other board members got that information. But when I was looking at that, like, for instance, on your first slide, you got at the primary school, there's a difference of thirty-five FTE, right? But on this sheet that Pam sent me, the number is different. So I don't know if you and Kiki can speak to this spreadsheet. Um, but when she sent the information, if I'm looking at it correctly, she said, she said the February third survey, and she got twenty-three, twenty-four. But then on here, she also got October survey, twenty-four, twenty-five. So with the numbers that you gave us based off of this, is that based off of the last survey from October?
So this FTE count, the twenty-three, thirty-five, is based off of the October survey, but I'm comparing to a projection. She's comparing survey to survey.
Wha- what does that mean?
So it's based off of February of twenty-four to October twenty-four.
Okay.
Survey, so from survey three to survey two.
Okay, so, and we, we give, we write it here at another survey. So this information that she sent is just based off the last survey, correct? And it kind of gave us information as to where these kids are going. Um, so this is the information that we got when the kids was withdrew, right? Okay, so like, what would be our plan? I mean, I know we can't make people bring the students back, but also on here, she got enrolled dates, she got drop dates, and so that's why I was hoping someone could speak to it. Because the enrolled date and the drop date kind of confused me, because it looked like we got some drop dates that was as of yesterday, but then you looked like you got one or two enrollment date that was as of last week. I mean, because that's, these are a lot of kids that we've losing. And I mean, we anticipated that we was going to be losing kids because of the, you know, expansion with the scholarship. But some of this just looked like, I mean, and I mean, I know we anticipated some people moving because of the meal closure, but I mean, it's, these are a lot of kids. Aren't we still responsible for tracking the students that are at homeschool? So now, if they're pulling them out and they're going to homeschool, are we still like doing the part that we're responsible for? Now, if they don't give us the documentation, then what does that do for us? Like, come the next school term, do they have to come out here and get paperwork filled out for the next school term as to whether or not they're going to homeschool their child?
Don't, don't those parents, though, if they're getting the voucher, don't they have to fill out paperwork?
Vouchers are different, different, they're not home. I understand that homeschool students that are receiving a voucher, they have to commit documentation to the state of how that money is being spent.
But the, the money follows the child. So if the child is being homeschooled, uh, th- this district isn't getting the money. So somebody's getting the money, so I'm sure the parents are going after it.
Homeschool parents that I've spoken to, if they went out and called our printer, went out and called our computer, they submit those receipts, O E and then D O E gift.
Right, but I'm just...
They have to prove with receipts and such of how they're spending, but that's between them.
But it's still on our back to make sure that they're being developed as they should.
So who does that for us? Is that you Jill, or is that you, Kiki? Who is it?
So, so the only other thing I would say is...
Do we have a plan, or are we looking at trying to look at some of these students that's, that's left to see, you know, if there's anything that...
Well, my only concern is if we signing off on them, but then if they ain't staying on top of stuff, it still does seem like we responsible. And then I know there's been cases in the past, I don't know how it is in the last few years, but I know in the past, students withdraw from us, they either go to homeschool, they go to private, but then they come back to us, and then they're behind. And so I'm just asking, what are we doing on our end? Because that's no different than what you said earlier, Reggie. If a student go missy, missing for ninety days, and then they pop back up to us, that's still impacting us. So when I'm asking who's responsible for that, I'm not trying to put that issue duty on nobody, but we the lead educational entity in this community, and we technically responsible for them. Um, so it just seemed like we need to be safeguarding ours. Now, people can have choice, and I don't, I'm not advocating against choice, but I'm just saying if ultimately it's going to fall on us, we need to stay on top of our end. Okay.
All right, well, uh, thank you for the report, Lacey, and we all, I think, here, realize that, you know, things are, have, have changed. And this is really, this is really a fluid situation, because we still got a lot of unknowns and a lot of don't knows that's coming down the road. And, um, in fact, you know, we're just talking about Adelia, now we're talking about Helene, and we, you know, and we're talking about, uh, you know, what's happened to our community in the last year and a half, the closures, loss of jobs, the three hurricanes, and we knew it was going to be an impact. Uh, we still don't know exactly what, um, our tax revenue is going to be, look, and property taxes is concerned. Don't really know the bottom line on that that I'm, that I'm aware of yet. Um, so there's probably going to be some punches that we're going to still take, uh, down the road. So if there's a message that I think that we all need to receive and, and agree to is that, you know, is, is, we're, we're really going to have to walk the straight and narrow as far as expenditures is concerned. And, um, even for, uh, and, and, you know, try to avoid, you know, the loss of jobs, but yet that may be something down the road that has to come our way. Um, you know, i- it's, it's just going to be tight, it's going to be tough. And, uh, we just knew it was going to come. It's just now we're beginning to see the, the ramifications of all this happen, and it's going to continue to come our way for a while. And, uh, but, uh, if we can work together, understand together, and, 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 you know, for the betterment of our community, uh, for the needs of our community, um, then we'll get through it. Uh, it, it's going to be tough, though. But, uh, thank you for the report. I think all of us has once again been kind of slapped a little bit about really where we stand, what we're looking at, and what even the unknown possibilities that's down the road. Okay, this brings us to the items of interest by the public. Do we have anyone this evening that would like to address the board at this time? If not, we move on, and we had, um, uh, added item point, uh, four point oh one, number two, and this has been addressed to be an action item. Um, and this was the request from Mr. Anderson, uh, for, uh, the building out at BPTC for twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars, if I'm looking at it right, Dan. Uh, this is to, for Allstate Construction. So this is an action item, so...
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes the motion. Second by Ms. Agner.
Second by Ms. Dunne.
You second it, okay. Any other discussion?
I got to quit, go ahead, go ahead.
This is the one I asked to pull for action, and the only reason, um, there were some minor changes that I had suggested to the contract. Um, I thought we, I had till the fifteenth, and anyhow, so we finalized it on Friday, and, and Mr. Anderson and I talked about it, and talk, he has talked to the gentleman at Allstate who will agree to make the changes I've suggested. They're not substance, uh, and will not affect the pre-construction agreement that you're being asked to approve tonight. And so that, that was my only comment, that the final contract you will get will have those changes in it.
All right, well, thank you, and, uh, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. And then, uh, our items were, uh, all of the items except what's been pulled was approved by the adoption of the agenda. But, uh, this brings us down to an item that we deem to be action item this evening, eight point oh one, number two. Uh, and this was the approval of agreement slash contract for Eagle Tree Technologies Information Technology slash Maintenance Service Contract for I- IT Director Position.
That was me, and, and my question was, on the contract, I'm not seeing any price.
The very bottom. It's very, what, it's there.
I figured I was probably missing it, but that's why I asked to pull it, is because I wanted to talk about... Second page, page two.
And just for clarifications, I think that should have said in lieu of the IT Director Position, because...
In lieu of, okay.
This is an independent contract or agreement that you're being asked to approve tonight.
This is the one that you talked to us about, Reggie?
Yes.
That basically would be saving us money in the long run.
It will save us money in the long run. We, we researched this company out. We met with them two or three different times, and, um, they first sent us a contract for eighty-five hundred a month, and I did a little negotiating and got it down to seven thousand for the remainder of this year, and then through June thirtieth, and then May thirtieth, we'll go back and talk about moving forward into next year. Um, Tim Murphy met with us, Deborah Mash was with us from IT, and had a lot of input into and asked a lot of questions of this company, and we feel really good with this group. They do several other schools in our area, and the price seems to be very fair and very appropriate based on the things they, they're going to do for us in our district.
And there's an out if you need it.
And there's an out after, after June thirtieth, if we need to do so. But I personally don't think that there will be.
Who will be the person that holds their feet to the fire? I mean, who's going to be over them as far as my, you know...
I will be ultimately as the superintendent. But now I will be leaning on some other people. Tim Murphy, who obviously is very, very knowledgeable and has been with us for a long time, and, and Deborah Mash and these other, others that we have in IT. Um, also, I'm leaning on them for help when it comes to, to the IT position. But these guys were very knowledgeable, and Tim Murphy sat in these meetings and highly recommended, and said they are very knowledgeable, and he felt really good.
He feels like they'll follow through and be there when they need them.
What they offer and what they, they took them and showed them all the servers of what we have, and feel good about it.
So I have a question real quick, Reggie, because this is the first I'm seeing the contract. Is, so is, did the contract just become available or something?
Well, they sent it to us over the Christmas break, and, um, is, well, Deborah's...
She's over in the corner.
Deborah, when did we...
They, they sent it to, we met with them for the second or third time on, um, December thirty-first, and they sent us a contract at the end of that week, which was on end of January. Reggie negotiated the costs down based on, um, Tim and I reviewing it and what Tim's going to continue to do for us in a short period of time to help get them up to speed. Um, so Reggie renegotiated the price, so we didn't actually get the con, this finalized contract until, um, Friday or Monday.
Okay, so we did just get the contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the only thing you've mentioned to me is that you were looking into something, but nothing had been presented to the board. So my question is, is this the same company that you had mentioned that is working with Jefferson and Franklin County?
Yes.
Okay, and so you mentioned that they will be able to send us someone a couple of times a week?
Yes.
Okay, now, m- my only concern that I briefly expressed to you, and I still have that concern without me speed reading through this right now, since it's the first I've seen it, was Jefferson and Franklin is K-12, they one building. Um, and I'm sure they might, I don't know, like, if their district office is like us outside of the school or whatever. I'm sure it might be. So do they cover all of the IT needs in those counties spread out to those buildings? Because we got six schools outside of our administrative building. And so I guess I'm concerned that we don't have nobody in-house. We'll have somebody, like, is, they going to have people that come to us and work with us three days a week, eight to five? Or is these people just going to be on call?
They will have people available to us two to three days a week.
Are they going to be in our district two to three days a week?
They will be here, and that was...
Physically, they will be here, you know, two, at least two days a week physically, and then they'll be at call, on call for anything that we need in our department.
So that's what I'm saying, that two days a week, or they going to be here eight to five?
They will be on, they will be here physically, yes, as needed.
Okay, so we'll have somebody here two days a week?
Yes, and that was one of our questions to them. Um, and another question that we asked, and, and that's why we had Tim Murphy sit in on the, the meetings, because he's, there's nobody here more knowledgeable than he is about what we have in our school system. And that was one of our questions, is because those schools are housed in one building, ours aren't. These guys answered every question that, that Tim had, and we had, very thoroughly, and we feel very confident in their abilities to do what we need them to do for our school district.
Deborah, they have remote access to, to our system, where they, off-campus, they can...
They, they will have. Yeah, after, we're waiting for the contract to be finalized, and then they're going to come and spend an eight-hour day with Tim here to go through some things and gain access to what they need. And we kept Tim, you know, y'all approved already, Tim, those hours.
We did, when we approved it.
We're going to continue his hours as needed through the end of the school year. I think y'all approved up to forty or fifty hours for him. And he's going to work with them and get them acclimated, that's reason we did a short-term contract with them through the end of June, and then we'll renegotiate with them at the end of this contract.
But even if they're not on campus, though, they still have the ability to work for you.
Y'all, I mean, Ron knows everything there is to know, and every school just about.
It's very, we all do.
Yeah.
It's very different with the network. It's very different with the network. We, we are more with software and hardware. But when it comes to servers and security and safety and working with insurance, then it's very different. So that's what Tim always managed to keep together. And this is his, you know, he took over from John. We've only ever had three people sit in that seat back there. So it's a very important seat, although people do not see what goes on. There's a lot that has to run in the background to keep us all safe and secure, because that's the last thing we want to get is a phone call, you know, saying that we've been hacked and they won't, you know, four million dollars to give us our data back. These guys were very impressive with their sense of security. That was, that was a big question to us.
Do we know how long they've been doing it in the other districts? How long they've had them?
I know that in Jefferson County, they've been there since Jefferson, since Jefferson went back to public school and lost.
So that's just a year.
They rebuilt that network themselves. So, because when the charter school left, they took everything. So they.
They ain't had the school back in no four years.
They built that network themselves. I don't know, Jill might know how long they've been in Franklin County. They've been managing.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay.
Okay.
They also manage a hospital. And so they're very adept with the things that we already use. Microsoft, all of our servers, they're adept with our Fortinet, which is our firewall and our switches. Their knowledge is great.
All righty.
Motion to approve.
All right, Miss Carlton, makes the motion to approve. Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. And this brings us down to items on the personnel recommendations. Item 29, 32, and 36.
Yeah, my question was, with these requests, I'm noticing that they're, it looks similar to what I've seen in the past in regards to whenever a request has been made for someone that's in community school. But it really didn't explain it. It just explained that these employees was going to get paid for a certain number of hours, but it didn't say what was for or why. On number 29, 32, and on 36.
The memos that we get have the specific students' names. But we can't put the students' names.
No, y'all don't never have a student name on there. Y'all normally say if it's for someone, what's this for? This is just saying these employees getting extra hours. And then I guess my question is, what for and what fund is this coming from? Because you got a fund here, but I don't, I don't know what that number means. Are they for students? That's, that's what I'm saying, are these are students that's in community education? So what fund is this coming from? General fund? So my question is, it seemed like these are increasing. Like every time I turn around, somebody's getting hours. And I mean, we don't never get any report on like, what's the outcome of this? Reggie, I mentioned to you, I don't know if you remember, but I mentioned to you, looked like I seen a student at the library getting this. And the student head was on the desk and the employee was trolling their phone. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out what instruction is going on. Because I mean, these are coming every time we have a meeting. It seemed like these requests have been made.
Well, I think Lacy kind of hit it on the head when talking about the budget, that that's one of the areas that we're going to definitely cut back on is those extra hours. And they're going to be based solely off need. So that's one thing that we are going to do.
These are not anything that's mandated for the ESC to do. They're, this is.
Yeah, they are mandated, but that's what I'm saying, we never get a report from it.
Network came over and met with me and the parent and the dean and the students. They don't want expulsion as an option, because then we do have to provide that.
Right. I guess I'm just concerned as it's increasing. And I, I get what y'all are saying, and I don't, I don't have a problem with that. It's something I've been wanting to ask a question on. But when I didn't see what was this for, I just was like, well, this look like what I've seen before. But my thing is, again, like, what is the outcome if they's getting? Yeah, it normally says that. Right. But I, I mean, is this working, though? That's what I'm saying, if we're providing instruction, is the kids and the students staying on task? Like, are they falling behind? Like, like, do we ever know a outcome, how this is playing out? Okay. But this is always general fund? Lacy? Now, is this one of the situations where this could be getting paid for with Medicaid versus general fund? Or do we know? Okay.
We're working on that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That answered my question.
All right, you making a form of motion?
I motion.
For all three of them?
My motion for all three, because that answered the question.
My second.
But we are going to be monitoring these hours, right, still? Okay.
Okay, so motion been made by Ms. Dunell, second by Ms. Carlton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. All right, this brings us down to items of interest by the superintendent and the board. Mr. Wentworth.
Yes, I've asked all of my principals to, to give me some positives, because it's not all doom and gloom around here. Steen Hatchie School, Mr. Bray sent me this, said that six of their seven grade levels scored above state average in both reading and math on PM two. And the one grade level that did not score state average, they still grew faster than the state average between PM one and PM two and is on track to reach state average on PM three. So that's good news from Steen Hatchie School. There was an outpouring of support for our students during the Christmas season, and I was there for this. But a variety of sources from the community came in and enabled every student in the school down there to receive multiple Christmas gifts. And that was, that was just an unbelievable gesture. They wanted to remain anonymous, but I thought that was awesome. That's what the Christmas spirit is all about, because that's why we're in this business, is to support and love on our children. So I was very impressed with that. And again, the Grinch play, if you've not ever been down there to see that, you need to go down next year and see it, Ms. Jeanne Mathis and then put on. It was fantastic. There was a standing room crowd only. And Mr. Bray said it was the most people that he's ever seen at their Grinch performance. So that was, that was outstanding. And they're going to be hosting a family engagement event with a focus on science. Stephen Wilson will demonstrate science experiments in the family center. And every student that attends will receive a free science kit to take home. So that's what's going on at Steen Hatchie. We're very proud of what they're doing down there. Ms. Papal at the elementary school. Their after-school music and drama club sponsored by Ms. Juanita Ratliff, the second year of them having this. And during the first semester, they had around 30 students participating in this club. And they put on two programs, one during the evening for all the community members and families. And I went to that, their Christmas performance was outstanding. And Ms. Juanita Ratliff, if there's anybody in this community that could be on American Idol, she might be it. She can sing like a bird. And I promise you, I'm going to have her sing the National Anthem at one of our sporting events before it's over with. So that's what's going on at the, the elementary school. And also their FCA leadership team, along with a teacher sponsor, which I'm very fond of FCA, has created a student-led leadership team that meets after school one day a week. And these students meet and help plan out the FCA lessons that are done here at Taylor County Elementary School. I still attend those, those meetings, because I, I created that baby. Every Thursday morning, we have 130 or so kids that come to the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And it's growing. I take them all doughnut holes. It's just, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, because I've said many times, our kids don't hear enough positives. And when it's, when it's the good Lord Jesus Christ we're talking about, they need to hear all that that we can give them. So I'm very happy about that. Thank you, Ms. Lidle, I mean, Ms. Papal for supporting that for us at the elementary school. Ms. Roberts at the middle school, students are showing great improvement from PM one to PM two in math. Our seventh graders are above state average in proficiency. In ELA, level one's decreased as well in all three grade levels. Teachers are using strategies to increase engagement, to get students to take ownership of their learning. And that's awesome, when all three grades improve. Mr. Finley at the high school. We have 13 students that are on track for their AA degree this spring. We have 118 students dual-enrolled this semester. 93 at North Florida Community College and 25 at Big Ben Technical College. 93 at NFC is an impressive number. And we're going to continue to work to make that grow, because I want this community to understand. And Mr. Finley knows where I stand, because we talk often. There's no reason that our parents and people in this community, children that want to go to college, we should have many, many more that earn their AA degrees before they ever walk out of the doors of the high school. It's free, it's an opportunity. And we're going to put together some tracks for every student, once they hit that high school in ninth grade, so that they know what they need to do to dual-enroll, to get their AA degree, to get Bright Future scholarships, or to attend Big Ben Technical College. They need to know what road to take. I've been talking with Robbie Edwards over in Mayo, they're a perennial A school. And it's not a secret how they're doing it. It's simply by the things I just stated. And I'm, I'm a believer that if you don't know, you ask. You find out what's working in other places and you present it, you propose, and you put it into action. And that's what we're going to do with our students here in Taylor County, in Taylor County. And I want to say this too publicly, put this in the paper, Ms. Angelo. I am very proud of every one of our administrators for the jobs they're doing. They are working their tails off. Our teachers are doing a fantastic job. And I hate to say this, but I'm going to say it, because truth hurts. Nothing that's going on in our school district was caused by us. It's not our fault we had three hurricanes in 13 months. It's not our fault Georgia Pacific closed. But I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to take it like a grain of salt. We're going to move forward, and we're going to be the absolute best that we can be in Taylor County for the students and for the people of this community. And I'm going to say this, too. I might be a little long-winded tonight, but I like sometimes me and Brother Danny, we get on the phone and we preach. We're addressing truancy. And we're going to address it hard. Bottom line is, we can't teach your children if you're not in school. So look forward to seeing what I put in the paper here in the next week or so that's going to be addressing those issues. Because it's not fair to our teachers to be gauged or evaluated on students that don't come to school. So we're going to address that issue. And I'll stop there, because I think I've said enough. But again, I appreciate all my administrators and, and directors in this district, because I know what they're doing and I know how hard they're working. And that's simply because I don't expect anything less.
Amen. All right, Ms. Ball, you have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie, though. Thank you, that's good. All right, Ms. Dunell?
Um, well, Reggie, thank you for all that information. Really appreciate it. I will co-sign you on the Grinch. Jeanne, it was very nice. It was very, very nice. And looked like the kids really, really enjoyed it. So it was just really nice being able to go down there and take part in getting to see that play finally. I finally got to see it, and I really enjoyed it. I'm still trying to figure out who the Grinch was. But the kids, they knew their materials. And I mean, they just really, really did a beautiful job. And even, I mean, all the way down to the little pre-K babies. They started the program out, and it was just really, really nice. So that was nice, and the weather was nice for it. Thank you, Lacy, for the presentation tonight. I'm prayerful that, you know, we'll make it through, you know, the situation that we in. And I'm prayerful that we'll figure out what we're going to do in regards to these FTE numbers keep dropping. I just want to ask that I pray we stay on top of it, because we do know the, I think it's what, still two more surveys that comes out February. And then is it, it's another one after that, right? But Jill, I meant to ask this question and forgot, this is what I told you I was going to ask you. I seen the request on here for summer school. So I know we're, we're summer school or whatever, but what is our plan with summer school? Are teachers actually teaching? Like, like, what's the plan with summer school?
Those are our pre-K students.
Okay. 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 What's going on middle school? Ms. Robert, y'all sent papers home. Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Right, so what is the enrichment? Okay. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, because that's what my question was earlier, because I did see something on personnel recommendations. Now, when you. Right. So when it's extra hours on here for your people, that's all grant funded, right? Okay, all right. But thank you, Reggie. That's what my question was earlier, when I said I was going to ask, but I didn't know she was going to be here. Now, thank you, Reggie, for that information you gave us on the PM, because I was wondering how the PM data was looking.
I got one more thing, too. I left off, Ms. Marinos at the primary school. Their PM two data was as good as it's ever been. ELA was up 10%. And the math was up 16%.
Okay, yeah.
And then Ms. McCall is prepared to tell us a goodie or two about the Big Ben Technical College.
So we've got a lot of good things going on at Big Ben Technical College right now. I just heard today, you saw we have 3.4 million. That was approved for our workforce capitalization grant to build on to, 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 to. $1,345 for. Great side about that. 18 students, we're building technology and we're. Thirteen of the students have earned nearly sixty, our certification and course. Our spring semester's off to a strong start, and we, we will begin the enrollment period for professional nursing, LP and R. At all nursing beginning. Time about this, now I want to call up...
Wow. Mm-hmm. Congratulations.
I'm gonna ask you on the RN, how many did you have to turn away?
Wow.
That just kills me. Yeah. Yeah.
That was in November? Oh, I have it November nineteenth, maybe.
That's great. And you've got how many enrolled?
We have eleven.
Eleven. It's on the agenda, and I looked at it.
That's great.
Okay.
That many away, just, just... Where do they go? They just stayed in state LPN until they...
What about the nine-one-one telecommun- communication?
Jeannie, y'all gonna have to wait and ask y'all questions when I get through? Because Danny is, I'm sorry, but Danny is, I'm sorry, but Danny's down here policing me, and I would like to finish. So y'all wait till you get round to y'all, because, you know, he policed me. So what I was saying was, and to Reggie, I, I allowed the superintendent, but now y'all can wait. So now, back to my remarks, but thank you, because I was gonna ask that question. I did read on here about the whole grant that y'all had on here about the meal, right? But you kinda explained about the situation with that. So back to my remarks, but thank you for the PM one data, and just thank you in regards to the other information that you gave us. Now, I did have one more question, but I think I'm gonna wait and ask you afterwards that question. So I'm done, Danny.
Are you done?
I, don't wait a minute. You, see, you need to say something to Jeannie and Bunny.
Thank you.
You ain't, not really.
Ms. Agar.
Forgive me, Deidra, for interrupting.
No problem.
I, I love the data that we're getting, and most of all, I love the attitude of not giving up. Nothing breeds success like success, I've said that a million times up here. But we're gonna be okay. I, I know we will, because we, the money follows the child. Child's not here, we don't need to, like you said, we don't need the teacher. We just gotta, just like you would with your home budget, you just gotta get rid of the waste. I mean, we can't go get a prime rib every Friday, you know what I'm saying? Or whatever, you know, the most expensive thing, or go to Fielder's or the buffet for fifty-nine dollars, you know what I'm saying? But we, we, we'll be okay. I, I believe that our government and our leaders are really gonna help us, and we've already received some help, and I think they're gonna continue to help us. And just whenever you see show, or you see Corey Simon, or you see, who's the other one?
Senator Monford.
Senator Monford. Anybody like that, just tell them how much you appreciate what they are doing for us, and do not forget about us, and I don't think they're going to.
Okay. All right, that it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Mathis?
Yes.
Your time.
I want to congratulate Lacey on her perfect audit, that she just got her very first, and it was perfect. It was amazing. I'm very happy for you. And I do want to thank Deidra and Brenda and Reggie for coming to our little Grinch play in Steen Hatchie. This was the shortest time that we had to put that play on, because we started really, really, really late because of the hurricane, and we did put that, we did make it to the stage in about four and a half weeks, and normally it takes us about twelve weeks to make it to the stage, so.
Wow.
It was every child in Steen Hatchie School was up... Every child in the school is in that play.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, every single child in the school is in it. And, and it, it, so it was, they did a fantastic job, and they put it together, and you just, they are amazed by theirself, and I think that's the thing about performing arts, and why I love it so much, is I love for the kids to be amazed by what they can do, and you don't know unless you start working with them and get them up there on the stage, and that's what it's all about, is their joy, you know, seeing what it brings out in them. So I love it. We have a talent show coming up in May, too, I'll let y'all know about that. Also, we did have a Santa shop. It was our fourth, third, it was our third Santa shop. We raised twenty-eight hundred dollars for Steen Hatchie School on that day, and the kids came and shopped at our little local thrift store, and we save up stuff that is donated all year long for gifts, and then they shop, and we wrap the presents and put the names on it, and then we give all the money to the school that they spend. And this year, it was twenty-eight hundred, and we also gave them a nine-thousand-dollar check to go with it from that little community store. So we gave them about twelve thousand dollars for Mr. Bray to have to help with needs that he has at the school, and that the students have, and he does a really good job with what we give him. And we also gave seven thousand dollars to our local veterans that same day. And if there is anyone in Perry that wants more information about how we do that, or what we do, and is interested in opening a place like that in Perry, or, please let me know, I would be more than happy to do everything I can to make that work. And it's a phenomenal program. I'm really happy about truancy. That is something that we, we would help us in attendance so much, and it's a huge problem for every district, not just us, so I'm really happy about that. And the CTE and dual enrollment, if you need to put a committee together, or you need interested parties, I'd love to be a part of that as well, it's something that, also near and dear to me, obviously, so. And Shelby, the nine-one-one communication class, how is that?
Right.
I had been worrying about it, well, because it was kinda had that tie into our firefighter school, too, that we, you know, so that got governed, too, so, you know, I was worried if that was going, so thank you. But they, I mean, you know, what works best, you find out as we go, you can't know until you do it. But I think that's about it for me. When is our next board meeting? The fourth, so we don't have one until the fourth.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am, and Ms. Carlton.
Okay, a couple of things, as I mentioned about the play, it was very, it was very entertaining, so it was, it really was, yeah. And also, the middle school band concert was excellent. It was really, it really was excellent, too, so, so I enjoyed that. Thanks to Lacey for her presentation, and thank for the administrators for being here tonight, for all of y'all, and for the input, appreciate that. And the only other thing is, we need to set a date for our master board.
Oh, yeah, we do.
If anybody, if you have your calendars, there's two dates available in February, and there's several in March, I didn't send those to you in March, but for February, I didn't know if the eighteenth or twenty-fifth was a good day for...
She said that we can break it up into two, because we're only required to have to do the seven hours, so if we need to do two four-hour sessions, or one seven-hour session, we need to keep that in mind, too.
Not yet, I got it right here. Okay. Yeah, she needs her, print your name and your signature, this is for the...
Do your signature, I can write the name.
Yeah, this is for the actual contract for it.
The eighteenth is a Tuesday, right, Brenda?
Eighteenth, yes.
And the twenty-fifth is as well.
Eighteenth and twenty-fifth is Tuesday. February, those are the two in February, and in March, there's a pile of dates.
How many hours of a day would we have to put in?
Well, that's just what's if we wanna do it all in one time, it's seven hours, or if we break it up, it's like four and three.
Yeah, I would rather do it all on one day.
I mean, too, because I have to take off work either way.
Okay, what, so you're here the eighteenth?
No, I leave the eighteenth.
Okay, the eighteenth is not a good day for Reggie.
Well, I guess we'll have to go the twenty-fifth.
It's a Tuesday all day.
What time?
You'll have to take off.
Well, I don't have times, we'll have to get back with...
Okay. So put that down.
So do y'all wanna do the twenty-fifth? Do we want to do the first one on the twenty-fifth, or do y'all wanna try to do it all in one day?
All in one day.
Can you do it all in one day? Seven, oh, it's a seven hour.
How many people can do it all on one day?
It'd be better on me if I, if it's gotta be on a Tuesday, it's gotta be on a Tuesday. Well, now, if you get into March, it's, it's a Monday, all over the, all over the calendar.
Do you have any Fridays?
Friday, the seventh of March, and the fourteenth.
I can't do the fourteenth, because that's spring break.
Yeah, that's spring break.
And I'm on a cruise, so I can't, I can't do it on the fourteenth, because I'd be out of town on a cruise. Can we just do the twenty-fifth, February twenty-fifth?
Tuesday.
Yeah, that's fine. Do we got a board meeting that day?
So he has a training in Orlando, right? There is a board meeting on the eighteenth, so we might need to change that board meeting. I don't know if y'all wanna do it.
That would be the smart thing to do.
On the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth?
Well, there's a, there's one scheduled for the eighteenth.
But Reggie said he's not gonna be here on the twenty-fifth. So we need to reschedule that on the eighteenth?
If y'all wanna do the master board like all day, and then have a board meeting that night, that was my question.
On the twenty-fifth?
I don't know if that's what y'all were talking about, I wasn't necessarily suggesting it, I just didn't know.
Twenty-fifth, I can do that.
Let's just do the twenty-fifth.
And move the board meeting also to the twenty-fifth?
Well, it looked like we're gonna have to move the board team, board on the eighteenth, so we're gonna have to just reschedule both board meetings next month? Because Reggie's not gonna be here on the eighteenth. Do we got a board meeting on the eighteenth?
Yes, the four, the eighteenth. Move the eighteenth to the, to the twenty-fifth?
Do it on Monday, we could do it on Monday if not to. The twenty-fourth, February fourth, they don't wanna do it that...
And then when is the next one?
If y'all don't wanna do the board meeting on the twenty-fifth, if we move it, we could, would y'all wanna do it on Monday? The board meeting on Monday?
I don't care.
No, I would, I would rather do it all on Tuesdays.
Are we out for President's Day? Is the school out for President's Day? Because it is a holiday. Are we out on that day? That's the seventeenth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in February.
So we might as well just keep it all the same day, the twenty-fifth?
Yeah. So we'll go with the twenty-fifth?
What time?
Well, we'll have to...
If it's gonna be all, it gotta be at least seven hours.
But we'll have to confirm it within, so I don't, that's why I don't know about doing all.
But I'll just have to take off.
So twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay. I'll say twenty-fifth at eight o'clock.
I'll get, as soon as I can find out a time, I'll...
Nine o'clock.
Ten.
But if y'all wanna, y'all wanna look to see if we could move the meeting to that same day, if we, if we have time, right?
Yes, I already put it on my calendar, so...
If we can back it down...
If we can, yeah.
From five fifteen, give us about thirty-minute break between that master board, back that down seven hours, then that way we can...
Yeah.
Just carry on and be done with it.
Instead of having a, a big break in between.
New event on the twenty-fifth?
Okay, got it, okay.
And you're looking at the twenty-fifth?
February, February, February the twenty-fifth.
Can you pass that paper so we can sign it, Brenda?
The board meeting, the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth, we were agreeing on that.
Right.
That's gonna be a pack that you...
Bunny's got it.
Okay, is this, is that all, Ms. Carlton?
That's all, thank you.
I got lost in all the dates. Okay, as we close down, just, just to kind of build a little bit about what Reggie said, you know, li- in our community, and not only ours, but there's so many communities, but for us, you know, life is full of things that we don't ask for, and they come our way. So we, we have got a lot of things in the last couple of years that come our way that we didn't ask for. But what we need to be able to do is, whatever comes our way, make the best of it. Kinda like the old saying, is turn lemons into lemonade. And our community, our community can, and this is my community, I was born here, raised here, and lived here my whole life, and I guess if the Lord don't come back, I'll probably die here. But the point being is, this is my home, and it's your home, it's our home, and if we'll work together, lay aside differences, lay aside, you know, envy and strife sometime, and disagreements, and, and make the best of what's been handed us, we'll come out on top, and we'll be better for it, and no telling what reflection that will have happened here will have upon other communities in other places. So this year, we're starting off, and got a lot of other things coming our way, but let's just make the best of it. And with that said, do we have a motion second to adjourn? Ms. Carlton makes the motion? Ms. Dunell seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, this meeting is over.
Thank y'all so much.
Reggie, you need to sign that, Reggie.